Call this meeting to order at seven thirty one P M on June twentieth, two thousand and twenty three. First, I'll do the roll call. I am Chair Maruziak. Ask for Vice Chair Testman. Let's see him. Commissioner Aliff. Can't can't hear you. Can you can you hear? I think he's trying to speak. Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Aliff, something with your microphone. Yeah, we we see you. And Commissioner Crone.
Here.
So I've not received any communication from Commissioner Vice Chair Testman or Commissioner Lambert. Have you? Community Development Director Orteche, have you received any communication?
No.
And Commissioner Mather? Also not here. And you received no additional communication from Commissioner Mather? True. Give me a hand up. All right. What I'd like to do is proceed for a couple of agenda items, at which point I'll call a vote for. Do we excuse or provide those as unexcused app?
Chair Maruziak, can I interrupt you for a second there? I did. We did receive a note from Vice Chair Testman this afternoon, and I'm just trying to pull it up here real quick.
I also believe I've adjusted my microphone problems. I am present.
Yes.
My apologies.
Here and see you.
So Chair Chair, or excuse me, Vice Chair Testman wrote this afternoon saying, asking for to be excused because it's his son's tenth birthday, so they're taking him out to celebrate. But if he said if it looks like his absence will prevent business from going forward, then we should text him and he can join. So that's an option there.
Okay, okay. Well, we do have a quorum, so we'll proceed. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Chair?
Yes.
I also want to let the commission know that Commissioner Lambert is in Canada on work and will not be able to join tonight.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll move.
I did. He he said he was present. Commissioner Crone, yes. So I move that we approve the agenda for June twentieth as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The agenda is approved. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda? See none. I don't see any hands up. Then we'll move on to the council liaison report.
Thank you, Chair and Commission. Councilmember Johnson had just a few things that I wanted to mention here. First is that last time that I spoke to you folks, I don't think that the fence had been added to the Riverview Park. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd let you know that the Riverview Park had been completed. It's beautiful. It's got this great train setup. But there were some concerns from the public about access to a steep embankment that goes down into the river, which is not great. So very quickly, the staff is able to put up a fence around the park, so it's much safer now. So I want to make sure that you're aware of that. Also, the work on Stokolmi Parkway has begun. Currently, they are surveying for mostly at the intersection, some of the work with curbs, ADA issues, that sort of thing, accessibility. And then we should begin repaving somewhere in late July. I don't want to put a specific date on it, given some of the recent impacts to traffic on I ninety and how those dates were changing on a daily basis. I don't want to put an exact date on it, but at any rate, repaving should begin sometime in late July, early August, somewhere in that range. And that'll, of course, have significant impacts on us, but less than rolling through potholes and certainly a lot better than degrading the road to such a point that we'd have to dig up the base and all that stuff. So it's good work to be done. The other thing, speaking of that, is that we do have the open comment period open with the Transportation Commission, which is a state group, and they are looking at transferring Stokolmi Parkway to the state, so it'd be an extension of Route eighteen all the way to two oh two. If you'd like to give comment on that, please email T R A N S C at W S T C dot W A dot gov on the topic. And the administration and the council are supportive of this move. We've passed resolution, I think last year, whatever it was, anyway, supporting the transfer of Stokolmi Parkway to the state for maintenance reasons. And that public comment period ends on June thirtieth. The other thing I wanted to mention to the commission is Big Truck Day. That will be on June twenty ninth from ten to twelve. I believe that's next Thursday. I think, yes, next Thursday, ten to twelve. From ten to ten thirty, they're not going to have any of the horns going off. So if you have child with sensory issues come early and it won't be quite as loud, that's a it's gonna be kids, so you know how that is. But after that, then they can have fun laying on the horns and all that fun stuff from ten thirty to twelve, and that's going to be at Centennial Park. Any questions from the commission? For me? Yes.
We just pulled commissioners. Commissioner Smith, any questions?
No, I don't. I don't think so. The only you mentioned the potential transfer of Stokolmi Parkway to to B S D O T. I know I've I've heard just in other neighbors talking about it, community members. I think I think most people are just kind of confused as to what is involved. I think the common perception is that that means that, you know, speed limits are going to be raised, it's going to become a freeway. So I think there is some of that misunderstanding among the community members, so maybe something to kind of do a little more messaging around in in kind of as that proceeds.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, I think some of the communications around that could be very useful. I just pulled up the city alert on the website. And I'm wondering if they talked about that issue at all. I don't see it in their write-off, but certainly staff can take note of that as well for the messaging from the city and just clarifying some of those concerns. The biggest thing is going to be the tax burden that the road is very, very expensive to maintain. And that most of the damage being done to the road is by large trucks, not by city traffic. It is used as an extension of eighteen, and therefore it it could be argued that it should be the state that maintains it rather than city taxpayers. But certainly, thanks for the for the feedback on that.
Yeah. And actually, I'd like to add to that comment, the senior parade, what is I was thinking about last meeting just happened last Friday, I believe it was. So maybe another thing that we can still use it for things like that.
Right. And one of the important things is whether or not there's going to be a lane closure for something like a parade. If there's going to be a disruption to the normal flow of traffic other than just you have a few extra vehicles for an event, then we probably need state approval for those, something like that. But but I don't believe that we have any regular events that require the closing of lanes of traffic or alteration to traffic flow. So those should be able to proceed as normal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Aliff, anything for our council member?
Much like Councilmember Smith, the Stokolmi Parkway transfer came up a couple of times over the course of the last two weeks, just in people I was encountering. So I encourage them to leave public comments with their concerns. A lot of similar sort of questions about ambiguity on like, are they still going to plow the the street, that sort of thing? So so I just directed people to leave public comment and that's it.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that'd be very important to communicate in our discussions on the Parks and Public Works Committee. When we ask similar questions, we got very favorable responses from the administration and from staff. So there shouldn't be any impacts to those kinds of things, but it's it's important for the public to be aware of that as well. So thanks for the feedback.
Okay. Commissioner Crone, anything for council member?
No comments or questions, no.
Thank you. All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
At this point, I'd like to request, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes dated June fifth, two thousand and twenty three. Make it a second?
Second.
And just in a way of discussion, for those who have not listened to the meeting or couldn't attend the meeting, please listen to the recording. Senior Planner Kessler gave an excellent presentation on accessory dwelling units, which I found eye opening and pretty exciting. So if you haven't seen that or heard that, I'd recommend you listen to that. With that, all in favor of approving the minutes as written for June fifth, two thousand and twenty three? Say aye.
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 You opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Now, do we have any permit review or design review board items? Then moving on to agenda item number two, land use strategy and middle housing strategies and actions. So recognize Community Development Director Orteche.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Emily Orteche, Community Development Director. We do have our land use consultant from L D C, Matt Kovit, available to guide us through the introduction to the land use element. Are you there, Matt?
I am here.
Good.
Thank you. So thank you, everybody. Nice to be here. Nice to see you all again. I'm just, I'm here to sort of the, as I mentioned before, we've got kind of these these successive planning initiatives that the city has been involved in that we've been lucky enough to partner with the city on, starting with the Housing Strategy Plan and then through the Middle Housing Grant Program, which was sort of detailed study of policy and code around displacement and equity and middle housing issues, and then going into the COP plan, which we're also on that that team as well. So nice continuity of of information and themes and kind of developing the 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 approach to the land use element and the housing element that are going to be needed to for meet the community's vision as well as comply with with the state requirements, which, as you all know, have changed substantially in the last few years. The the piece that I'm talking about tonight, it's the bridge, the bridge between the middle housing and the the comprehensive plan is this issue of the land capacity analysis and some of the policy and related code recommendations and considerations that we've been working on to help inform the COP plan update. I provided you a memo in the in the packet that summarizes the the land capacity analysis findings and also provides a bit of an introduction to some of the themes that we'll be talking about as far as the goals and policies are concerned in the comprehensive plan. So I have, in addition to the to what I've identified in the memo, I've got some some maps and some just the same tables and some maps to share with you all, including we've got some of this some of the buildable lands and land capacity information available on an interactive map through R G S online that will be getting loaded up on the city's website as part of the public engagement and outreach as part of the the conference plan. So I'll show you that in a little bit.
Excuse me. Community Development Director Orteche, could you zoom in a couple clicks on that? Thank you. Thank you.
And if if folks want to have the memo up there, we can leave that up. I can also share the, as I said, I've got some some maps and those same tables to show in a PowerPoint slide if that's easier for folks. So I can just kind of give a, yeah, there we go. Thank you. Can you all see this?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Oh, yeah, that's right. Chair.
Very good.
Um. So as as we've discussed before, Stokolmi has has these growth targets that you have to plan for as part of as part of the the comprehensive plan updates. Plan four meetings show that you have sufficient land capacity to accommodate. And these numbers come from the from the countywide planning policies in implementation of the kind of the the regional growth strategy through P S R C. So kind of there's there's state requirements you have to plan for your projected growth, what that means for cities within P S R C is have to follow the regional growth strategy. And then at the countywide level, all the municipalities in the county get together and figure out what those numbers are for each community. As as I've discussed with you before, Stokolmi has a really large housing unit, housing target, and and the housing income band allocations that are part of ongoing discussion and C P P amendments at the county level are based off of that number. So kind of, you know, you kind of start from this extremely high number, and we've talked about this before, that then gets, you know, spliced out into all these income categories. Employment, you have an employment target as well. That's a bit of a different, a bit of a different, a horse of a different color to use a colloquialism, because forecasting employment growth is is borderline impossible, especially on a twenty year planning horizon. But you just kind of have to, you have to kind of go through a a mapping and capacity exercise to show that you're 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 meeting your kind of anticipated employment requirements as well. On the issue of housing specifically, I think it's it's no secret at this point that that the city believes that, and we believe as well, that the buildable lands report and the documentation the city provided the county and that the county then turned into the buildable land state that was did not serve Stokolmi particularly well. The the, you know, not not through any any one person's mistake, just, you know, discussions that were that were had, questions that were raised, and kind of this process of of setting these targets. This, there was some, you know, well, is this right? I'm not sure if this is right. And and then it kind of gets passed on to successive councils and administrations and community development directors and planners. And what you end up with is this situation that Stokolmi's in where you had as of the 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 report that the county put out in two thousand and twenty one, you had a capacity or a target of fifteen hundred housing units and a capacity of one hundred and sixty seven housing units, which is obviously given given Stokolmi's extremely constrained buildable land environment, you know, it kind of fails the fails the smell test. So one of the things that we set out to do was to come up with an updated and somewhat more precise number, hopefully, on on housing capacity. And you did, that number did increase from one hundred and sixty seven to two hundred and thirty. Still doesn't get you anywhere remotely close to fifteen hundred, even after accounting for pipeline projects. Employment's a little bit of a different story. There's there's not not including, so this does not include the mill site, which was in the pipeline envisioned at the time of the buildable lands report, which actually the mill site actually overperformed on its its anticipated job capacity quite a bit. In addition to providing some housing capacity, which is which is awesome. But under 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 our current set of assumptions, it seems like the city has has plenty of employment capacity. It's that housing number, you know, the if you if you take out pipeline projects, this number, this it's a thousand and seventy nine compared to two hundred and thirty units capacity. So there there's a huge gap there. And so one of the questions is kind of is kind of what do we do about that? Which is a which is a policy level, you know, question for the city that we're helping out with. But, you know, this at this point, our task is just sort of to come up with a kind of come up with a better number. This map, which I'll I've got an online version of well, as well, that I'll show you in a few minutes. You know, this broader this broad question of where is potential capacity located? So this ranges from from the old the older part of the city, some vacant lands, some potentially redevelopable land all the way through a couple sites in Stokolmi, Stokolmi Ridge, which were not included in the original buildable lands report from two thousand and twenty one, and then a few remnants sites like there's a couple planned commercial industrial zone sites that were not included in the mill site acreage that that kind of popped up in the in the parcel data. So so there's some of that represented as well. This what this map shows that does not show, I should say, is the the actual area of each of these parcels that is developable. And so one of the things which is really important that you do in a land capacity analysis is you take out all the lands that's likely in critical areas. So we created, I can show you all a map of this as well, if you're curious, showing the the feature that we made, but you essentially combine all of the critical areas and 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 so you make some assumptions about buffers based on stream classification and the wetlands and slopes, and you kind of match all those things to get in the floodway. Of course, you match all those things together. And you use that to combine with the parcel data to figure out how much of each parcel that might have capacity, you know, is it vacant, is it redevelopable, how much of that is actually developable? So, you know, you you might have a situation where it's a it's a ten acre chunk of land, but only an acre of it is developable because of critical areas. Well, the potent the potential buildable acreage of that is only one acre, right? So that that really can affect the supply dramatically. So when you look at this, this is just parcels that are in these colors. So we didn't show the portion of it that gets chopped out to be, you know, part of critical areas. These are just the parcels. Just because showing that other feature that's got all the critical area shapes on it would be really busy and confusing. But I'm happy to show you through that if if there's any questions about it as far as the critical areas mosaic is concerned. So this is that this is what we used to produce those numbers of one thousand two hundred and thirteen jobs and two hundred and thirty housing units. We were also asked by staff to, you know, to 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 take a look at a couple other a couple or a couple other areas of town and some some features that relate to the middle housing grant that that may be of interest to the Planning Commission and the council, one of which is displacement risk. So so that displacement, sort of market force displacement as as defined in the middle housing program that the state put the grant dollars in and you know, that's defined in in legislation and defined by the Department of Commerce. So Stokolmi doesn't really have any of that. You have a you have a, you know, most of the population of the city is in a a master plan community that's only twenty years old. And so the likely likelihood of of market based displacement risk in most of the city is is very low. There is geographic displacement risk as a result of flooding. So the floodplain and the floodway. And so what I what I'm showing here, this this snapshot of this map, this shows parcels that have that have first floor or solely residential uses that are in commercial zones in the floodplain, in some cases, the floodway. So the the flood line, the floodplain line kind of includes, you know, a solid portion of the of of these parcels as well. So those would be considered, you know, to not really have any capacity at all. We we kind of excluded those from the analysis capacity. But this shows that I think the number that we had was around fifty one housing units are located in in commercial zones or in the floodway and would be considered at this risk of, you know, geographic displacement and flooding. That also goes for some employment based uses as well, because even in in areas where it's not residential on the first floor, you've got businesses located on the first floor that would be vulnerable vulnerable to displacement if there was a flood. So there's 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 several dozen businesses and several dozen housing units that would be considered potentially vulnerable to displacement as a result of flooding. We also looked at, so one of the things that to get a little a little technical for geeky for a second, that that it's used to figure out whether something is redevelopable or not is the ratio of the value of the improvements on a parcel of land to the value of the land. And while that's a that's a that's a helpful indication in 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 some situations in the old part of 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 Stokolmi that creates, it's it's a little bit of an interesting situation where the structure, it's like a structure might be like of of in kind of poor repair or of relatively low value. But because so much of the land value is really low, because it's in the floodway or the floodplain, you you don't end up with with numbers that meet the kind of the the county's definition of what's redevelopable. So we did some mapping to show vacant and and redevelopable parcels as well it within this area. So some, but then you see these two on this map, couple of strips along railroad and falls ads, where you've got these commercial buildings, those those colors represent, the darker colors represent higher improvement to land value ratios, and the light colors represent lower. But some of these really pale, almost white colored ones, those are vacant, and those are actually included in the in the analysis of of what has capacity. But these ones with the darker colors, you can see there's there's a really wide variation amongst all these these really old commercial skinny commercial lots, or in some cases, these wider commercial lots as well that indicate that that can help kind of indicate the age and or condition of the structure. And maybe you start to think about redevelopment in some of in the downtown, for example, with a different a different set of eyes, so not just the the strict kind of county definition that we have to use to to, you know, have consistency between these analyses. But, okay, if you're actually looking with a little more of a fine grained a fine grained look at some of this, some of these areas, you know, is there potentially some redevelopment potential on some of these parcels that have older, poorer conditioned structures, even if the land value isn't super high compared to their neighbors, they may have redevelopment potential. So that was another thing that we that we took a look at. Another thing that we took a look at, a direction of of staff and the council was looking at some individual sites. The land capacity analysis and the buildable lands work is, by definition, is not site specific, because you want to kind of get out of the 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 business of making assumptions about critical areas that lead people to think things that are don't end up being true about whether a site has capacity. So you kind of tend to stay away from that. But in this particular case, there's a couple sites that are like this particular, these few parcels that are city owned on Stokolmi Parkway. We looked at at sort of the underlying critical areas information and the parcel information and some issues of steep slopes and wetlands, and how much is how much of this is actually buildable and how much capacity could you could you get out of it? So we I have some more maps I can show on this later, but the 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 decision has really been to focus on this middle, this beige color parcel that is city owned, it's on Stokolmi Parkway, that's zoned mixed use that could be used for potentially for affordable workforce housing. And I imagine Community Development Director Orteche has some word that she could add about that. But this was included in the analysis of, you know, taking a little bit of a finer grained look at the actual buildable area potentially of these parcels, subject to obviously critical areas, stuff being updated from when this was plotted twenty years ago. But there's some really interesting risks for the mill here. We also looked at, because of the work that we did as part of the just the early scoping for this and the housing, the housing needs assessment and the Housing Strategy Plan is the city has a a pretty good size potential annexation area. And is there any potential capacity for future growth targets in that potential annexation area? The council's been pretty clear that they don't they don't view the the P A A, so it's called as a as a viable option for trying to kind of cram all of the that huge shortfall in in housing capacity to cram it all on the P A A, because you don't want, they don't want to kind of concentrate, especially like the the needed, the the affordable targets for those making especially under fifty percent of the area median income. The council said, we don't want to just kind of assume that we're going to be able to cram a lot of lower income households in these, you know, hard to reach parcels in the back of the business park that we don't even have, we don't even control yet. So, you know, for this, for the purposes of this comprehensive plan, this is, you know, the 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 goal of the city is to not count on the P A A for meeting that housing target. But we did take a look at using some data the city provided on parcels that are not in critical areas that are actually buildable to look at the potential capacity for future growth targets. The potential mixed use sort of continuation of the Office Park off of Douglas Street could be under under the the buildable lands reports assumptions could be as many as fifteen hundred jobs, which is a lot. And between the the rest of it, as we scoped it out, potentially around five hundred and fifty housing units. So a a lot, you know, a pretty good amount of housing units, but certainly a a a lot, you know, a pretty good amount of housing units, but certainly not, that's still not sufficient to um overcome that shortfall. And the city's not really interested in in trying to use it for that, but just um for, you know, for planning for the future. And if there's any policy changes that the city is going to consider in the comprehensive plan surrounding um implementation of contingent zoning in the PAA, or, you know, beginning the process of of um an interlocal agreement with King County to 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 begin an annexation procedure for some of these areas that this kind of information could be really helpful for that. Um and I've I've got some, I've got some maps that I can, uh the online versions of these, if folks are um if folks are curious, and this will give you these slides as well after the meeting. Um and you can navigate to the map yourself. Um I've got it up on a a separate screen here. But before I talk about the the middle housing goals and policies code stuff, any any questions about those maps? I imagine there may be some.
Uh Commissioner Smith, any questions?
Not yet, no.
Commissioner Aliff?
Not really a question, but a comment. There really are a lot of options there to work with, are there?
Nope. They sure are. Um, you know, basically, we 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 uh we we dug with a a a sharp spoon at at every uh every every bit of information in the the county's assessor data and um some, you know, the the city owned land and local knowledge of potential projects coming through and and, you know, we 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 raised it by the the um capacity by like fifty five units. Um which is, you know, that's not nothing. Um I will also add, as you'll see in the memo, that um if you apply some reasonable assumptions about about how many ADUs you might get over the next twenty years. Um we came up with a number that is a, you know, I'd I'd say marginally better than a back of the envelope calculation, but like at this point, it it's really all um you just kind of, you you look at comparables and every city is so different that you can't take that too far. But the number that we came up with using some of some reasonable assumptions was like seventy one ADUs. Um so I I think, you know, if you think about twenty years, I think it's not inconceivable to think that you could get a few dozen ADUs um in St. Kwame, especially as a result of implementing HB thirteen thirty seven. So again, that gets you, that gets you uh another seventy or however many it ends up being, you know, for the purposes of the cop plan, you could maybe say seventy um ADUs. That's that helps, doesn't get you anywhere close to your growth, your growth target, but it helps. And that does represent especially kind of at that under the median, you know, eighty to a hundred percent AMI, that that could be, that could be real um real capacity for some of those households that are uh not quite, not quite able to afford homes in St. Kwame.
Thank you. Commissioner Crone, any comments?
No comments, just still digesting.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Please, please proceed.
Sounds good. So uh the other piece of what we're what we're wrapping up on this middle housing um program is uh it we looked at in earlier phases of this, we looked at um the current comprehensive plan and development regulations and um and uh sniffed around for what the state asked us to look at with regard to um policy support for efforts to reduce displacement risk, um policy support for um expanded metal housing and then, you know, development regulations that that implement those things a- as well as looking for potential um potential changes to the cop plan and the the zoning code that might um that that would help um sort of better implement those things. And this is based on new requirements in the housing element that um that that you're required to sort of have consideration of s- s- uh specific housing types, um consideration of ADUs, consideration of you know, small multifamily like duplexes, triplexes um and other housing types like cottage housing and courtyard apartments and um things that fall under that middle housing umbrella. And uh after doing the kind of the initial code and and um and racial equity and displacement risk research, you know, that kind of solidified the the um the uh hypothesis at the beginning that that, you know, St. Kwame doesn't currently have um doesn't currently have really any um displacement risk, uh market based displacement risk as as currently defined. Um but that doesn't mean that that A, you don't have to ma- you know, make some policy tweaks to um comply with the housing element and also just the the idea of um guarding against, you know, future displacement risk, thinking and thinking twenty years out, thinking long term. Um there's there's a few policy tweaks that are probably going to be needed. There's also some, you know, uh this is based off of um expanding off of what we did in the housing strategy plan, but um you know, one of the things we talked about in the housing strategy plan was um was that, you know, um implementing the R three zone potentially in contingent zoning in the PAA. Um there's not any um any uh uh dimensional standards for R three, it's not implemented anywhere. Um that's that's a a multifamily zone where um middle housing types, as well as some denser housing types, would be would be allowed or conditional in in some cases. Um also looking at things like um things like townhouses, um small multifamily. So this is thing, your code is not very, very specific when it comes to multiple unit buildings. Um and so some potential changes regarding things like townhouses and small multifamily like duplexes and triplexes, um as well as some code changes that are needed to meet state requirements around permanent supportive housing. Um also looking at uh potential uh potential future rezones that could help um it's uh increase the kind of the the um potential supply of of middle housing types. Uh we were, we were looking in particular at the 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 one big um one big chunk of of R one to ten zoned land um still that has vacant or um very lightly developed south of downtown that uh when when we look at the critical areas information, it's it's kind of got this, you know, it's it's kind of got this um small al- almost isolated pocket in the middle that's developable, surrounded by wetlands. And so, you know, the um the uh one of the, one of our ways of thinking about this was, well, you know, if the city is uh interested in potentially rezoning that to R two and making or and or making some changes to um the code to allow uh subdivided townhomes or something, for example, to be built in the R one to ten. Um that might be a way of of coming closer to achieving the zone capacity of that land with uh, you know, could so much of it is in critical areas um without having to use the queue to the ten thousand square foot minimum lot size um for eighty percent of the lots that's currently in the code. So a couple things along those lines. Um some al- also some code changes needed to support, uh as I mentioned, the the transitional emergency and permanent supportive housing. So that's new um state law. Um your code is kind of gets you part of the way there, but there's some additional changes needed. Um contingent zoning for the PAA, I talked about that a little bit, um without considering in a reservoir for affordable housing, which is the the council's um concern about this. Uh thirteen thirty seven, that's House Bill thirteen thirty seven ADUs, it sounds like, um it sounds like the city is well underway on on looking at that, um which is great. And it's going to show up, it's going to show up here as well, but I think you guys are are already off and running on that. So, you know, I I'll hold any additional comments and write up on that. And then lastly, uh that that parcel that I showed, that city owned land, you know, the the use of city owned land to promote affordable workforce housing. Um and then concurrent with those with those um with those code and program uh changes, some some work in the cop plan that we identified that's going to be needed to support uh things the city may choose to do on this. Um so one obviously is if you are going to uh look at contingent zoning for the PAA, especially to add um uh more housing capacity, a lot of it that's buildable currently is zoned, or is the future land use designation is like um innovative mixed use or something. And um so if the city wanted to promote more housing potentially in in future for future growth targets in the PAA, um some future land use designation changes in the plan are going to be needed. Um there's also some interesting stuff that we found in in existing policies around um affordable housing. City has lots of policies to encourage more affordable housing, which is awesome. Couple interesting comments um came up uh about this issue of um uh one of the, one of the policies in particular um talks about uh housing that's that's um there's required affordable housing in certain zones, and it should be either proximal to services or dispersed throughout new development. Um which uh can be kind of mutually exclusive, if you think about it. And and there's actually a lot of debate about um whether, you you know, um like proximal to to transit stops or proximal to commercial services is is best or what for affordable housing, or whether it's best dispersed throughout new development. There's a lot of um great debate going on about that in cities across the across the country right now. So that's just something to keep your eye on. Um there's also some changes that are going to be needed as a result of the changes to state law, the Growth Management Act around things like these these um income bans, you know, the extremely low, very low, low income households. Um more specificity and support for uh programs that deal with that flooding displacement risk, like weatherization, flood relocation, renovation assistance. Um and then uh more precise language regarding existing neighborhoods to reduce displacement risk and potential exclusion in housing. That is all that I have. Um so uh and we've got, we're we're kind of racing to the finish line on getting these, getting that report finished. Now that we've got the um the land capacity analysis stuff pretty much done. I'm happy to show you, show you all uh kind of those maps of the critical areas and and those parcels, we can kind of zoom in and look at some stuff if 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 folks have any questions.
Is there another mechanism for us? Sorry. I would love the opportunity to use your map and sort of dive in and then follow up with some questions later. Um I I think that's more likely to be a productive use of everybody's time. Would would that be an acceptable way for us to proceed?
Up to you all.
There's no way I'm going to go with a list of questions here tonight.
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah. So so I think what um what we can do is is, you know, now that we've got, we've got these online maps ready that we can get on the city's website, which is great. Um and uh and the um spreadsheet that we use to calculate all this can also be made available to folks. Um and I can work with um David and Emily on this to to get get this out to you all. Um I think uh, you know, what we're, what this is, this is um, this is could just kind of a pivot point here, where we kind of we wrap up the middle housing work and we start really looking at policy choices and um and, you know, council, the council's indicated some direction, but you know, really getting down to um to to specific things, specific approaches to that housing target issue, specific approaches to the PAA, specific approaches to any potential um future rezones or anything like that. That's, this is where that top conversation begins. So.
All right. Um I would like to highlight um basically insights to this discussion that Councilmember Watten has discussed. So I I believe this is out there, but I just want to highlight the three things that he pointed out. Looking at the information, the targets, he put it out that the biggest number of the target that we'd received were seven hundred and twenty units for thirty percent AMI and below. And that such would have to be subsidized as well as have transportation. And he said, we're, what we really would need, which I agree with, is uh fifty percent to eighty percent AMI is really the need of Snow Kwame, because that actually would fill the need for transportation. In other words, so many people leave uh to go work and then come in uh thousands of people, that if you fill that fifty to eighty percent, that would fill a lot of the folks that would get on the road. So I'd just like to highlight those three items because I think they're important. And just to add one more, kind of related to the comprehensive plan, I'm informed that a climate issue would also be part of the comprehensive plan. And transportation is the number one carbon dioxide emitter in the country. Um if we as a as a city could get a lot of folks off the road by a intelligent affordable housing plan, and that'd be fifty to eighty percent, which still would need subsidy, then would be putting a check mark there as well and making a dent in it. So I just wanted to yeah, I I know this discussion's taking place elsewhere, but just for the record, highlight those points.
That's a great point. Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. Yeah, I just on that last point, um I completely agree about the environmental effects. Another reason that uh higher densities is a really important thing for cities is that it means that you're sparing trees, you're not building quite as wide. And um you have more units that are closer to the services that those units need. Uh so that means fewer roads, which means less maintenance overall. Uh fewer running pipelines all over the place. Uh so anyway, just in general, even beyond just climate change alone, there are a lot of environmental uh positive impacts to building at a higher density than uh has historically been done.
Good. Okay. Um so just quick uh round robin before we move off that topic. Uh Commissioner Smith, anything else uh from your end?
No, this this is, this is great. And I I had also had a chance to attend the uh the session, the luncheon session that uh Councilmember Maton held, uh I guess it was maybe last week? Last week or the, yeah, it was last week. They all blend together.
Yeah, I'll note, I'll note Commissioner Smith, that uh the number that we gave at that last meeting was a couple hundred units higher because we uh additional information came in by way of Community Development Director Arteche about parcel S twenty one in St. Kwame Ridge. Um which, you know, had kind of been on the table for commercial development, but then but then taken off. And we were like, oh, you know, we can include this, we include this in the total. But then new information came in that it's likely to not be um housing. And so that's why that, that's why that number is different. On the plus side, it did get you even more employment capacity. So that's good.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Aliff, any additional comments?
Not at this time. Thank you so much.
Okay, Commissioner Crone?
Nope, just want to say thanks for the detailed uh presentation and and all the information, lots to chew on.
You're welcome. Looking forward to many more of these.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to move on to item number three of the agenda, the state legislative session. Actually, let me, let me take a pause there. Um I'd like to move that we excuse Vice Chair Testman and Lambert uh from uh this uh uh attendee of this commission. Can I get a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Um I'd also like to move that we um not excuse Commissioner Mather, he has not attended a number uh from this meeting. And uh again, I'm open for conversation, but uh we're trying to reach out to him a number of times and he um I I don't know why he's he's not been attending. So can I get a second on that or? Any discussion?
No discussion necessary. I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so for the record, um Vice Chair Testman and uh Commissioner Lambert are excused and Commissioner Mather um is not excused. Okay. With that, let's move on to item number three of the agenda, the state legislative session overview. And this is an update, I understand. So Community Development Director Arteche, what uh what would you like to share?
Thank you, Chair Maruziak, Emily Arteche, Community Development Director. We have David Goodman, Senior Planner, available to give us a debrief on legislative updates from this last session that applied to the Growth Management Act. David, are you ready?
Yes, uh thank you. Can everybody see my screen all right?
Yes.
Great. Um so this this probably won't won't take too long. I just wanted to highlight a couple bills that I thought um you may, you may have heard a little bit about, but I thought might be of interest. Um there was a lot of action about housing uh at the at this year's uh state legislative session. Um a lot of it was bipartisan, which is kind of interesting. Um and a lot of it, um you know, showed the state kind of stepping into um issues that are usually um, you know, usually addressed at the local level. So I think it's a bit unusual and a bit notable that the state um and the governor signed numerous bills where the state is coming in to override what has traditionally been um local uh local policy choices. So I think that speaks to both the severity of the issue, um but also the state's willingness to, you know, take really concrete steps to, you know, try to ease the housing crisis. And a lot of the action was focused on doing things like um, you know, removing requirements, removing kind of burdensome and unnecessary requirements that get in the way of housing being developed and kind of taking some of these more uh arbitrary or sort of unnecessary pieces that a lot of cities make applicants go through uh and 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 kind of saying, you know, you can't, you can't do that anymore. Um so I think I have three, three bills to go through real quick. So this one is notable. So this one is notable, although they're all notable, I suppose, but um this one actually does not apply to Snoqualmie. Because Snoqualmie, um, because the bill exempts cities that are uh that have a population of lower than twenty five thousand. Uh, and are not within a larger contiguous, not not part of a larger contiguous urban growth area. So in other words, because. Um, Snoqualmie and North Bend are kind of out here on an island. Um, uh, they, they don't, they're, they're not within the contiguous UGA, which is sort of everybody else in King County. Um, but there's a lot of discussion about this one, and I think this is probably the most notable um state intervention. And and has been the subject of a lot of discussion. Um, and essentially what it does, as you can see by the chart, is it, it um requires that cities uh above. Uh, well, you can see the different population scales there, but essentially. Um, requires at minimum that cities allow two or more units per lot, so that effectively. Um, you know, make single family restrictive zoning uh a thing of the past. Um, and uh so that's for, you know, kind of mid-sized cities and for for larger cities above seventy five thousand in population. It's a four, four units minimum per lot, so that's, that's a quadplex or fourplex. Uh, and those numbers go up uh within a quarter mile of a major transit stop. Um, so, you know, I think personally, I think, you know, my, my own editorial opinion is I think this is the way to go, and I think. Um, you know, particularly with with buildings of, you know, a duplex or even a fourplex, I think you can. Really get a lot of units into a space and not have it really disrupt uh how the neighborhood looks and feels. Um, and you know, you walk around some older cities, uh Minneapolis comes to mind, and you just see a lot more. Uh, mixing of single family residences and these kind of smaller apartment buildings in the same neighborhood. Um, and and I think it just really does wonders for for, you know, sort of the vibrancy of a neighborhood, and it it just. Is an easy way to fit more units into the same space. As I said, Snoqualmie is exempt from this, although um, uh, you know. I think, I think clearly with the work that Matt has been doing about middle housing, we we might be interested in. Doing something like this anyway, but um this, this to me is probably the most notable piece of housing-related legislation. Um, that uh that came out of the state this year, even though, again, it doesn't apply to Snoqualmie, but I think it's useful for the commission to know this is kind of the direction. Uh, that that the state is going in. Any, any comments or questions on that one?
Um, Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, and another thing is if we. As a city wanted to interpret as, oh, that means that we uh can start planning as though we won't at some point in the future. Become a city that is under this law. It wouldn't take a whole lot. Of effort for the state to amend this to include uh cities that are not within. The uh contiguous U UGA, so it might behoove us to just get ahead of the ball anyway and just. Act as though it applied to us.
Thank you. Uh, and then I I have just two more here. The, the first one, uh HB thirteen thirty seven, I I know that you had a presentation from. Uh, my colleague Jonathan Kessler last meeting, so I won't, I won't um go over that too much. I think you already know. Um, you know, it it requires at least two ADUs be allowed on all properties. Um, and and notable for uh Snoqualmie is that the city may not require. Um, that the owner of the lot reside in either the accessory dwelling unit or the primary dwelling unit. Um, that, that is the rule, that is the code in Snoqualmie right now. Um, so uh, you know, we can, there, there's a, you can certainly um debate whether that's a a good or a bad thing, but. Um, that, that is one of the areas that Snoqualmie uh is going to uh have to change to become uh to to be uh in compliance with the state. Um, and then the, the third one here, I think, is probably of interest to this group because. Um, the commission, as you are all very aware, also serves as the design review board for the city. Um, and HB twelve ninety three requires that cities that do design review. Um, only apply clear and objective development regulations um as opposed to aesthetic opinions. So. Um, I think by and large, Snoqualmie does a pretty good job, but you hear all sorts of horror stories coming from, not to pick on them, but City of Seattle. Where these projects just get in endless delays and have to do, go to endless meetings. On, you know, because the uh, you know, commissioners there get to have final say on really small. Things such as, you know, the tint of the windows or, you know. How wide the door is, or, you know, all these sort of things that you could just go on and on and on forever. Um, and and it is one way, um, whether intentional or not, that a lot of cities. Um, slow down development, and if you talk to any uh, you know, developers, they'll tell you that time is very much money and, you know, the longer that they have to wait to get. Approvals for these kinds of things, the more expensive it gets, and then the less likely, you know, that that you're gonna get. Um, your project in the end. So, um, you know, I think this is, um. You know, I I think this is a really interesting one. Um, I will note that it does not apply when you have things like historic design review, so. I know obviously the commission does that as well. So when you're looking at sort of historic um and and design standards of that nature. This, you, you can still have. A bit more of a subjective review, but but for your, your garden variety design review. Uh, there'll be no more kind of nitpicking and. Focusing on really subjective criteria. Um, uh, and 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 on top of that, um, you know, the bill also does a couple of things to kind of. Uh, where there is design review to make sure that that review occurs concurrently with all other reviews. Um, and that if, you know, for example, if there's a public hearing. Um, for, for whatever other reason that the designer review public hearing happens at that same meeting, so it's a way to. Um, shorten the review period uh and also, you know, kind of um. Uh, by by limiting the standards to only those that are very objective. Um, reduce sort of time spent on on more trivial things and and really just try to. Um, make it a little clearer for applicants on on what, what, uh, both what they need to present and also. What is going to get them, you know, through the door and to the next step of the, of the development process. Uh, comments or questions on either of those?
Councilor Johnson?
Uh, thank you, uh Chair. Uh, so on HB eleven ten and on HB thirteen thirty seven, my understanding is that either way, whether they apply as Snoqualmie or not, uh, that. Existing HOAs are exempt from both of those laws as well. Uh, but that future HOAs that may be uh developed in the future uh cannot restrict ADUs, et cetera. But we do have uh the ridge, which is what ninety percent of our population, something like that, that's in an HOA. Uh, that has restrictions on ADUs and that uh HB thirteen thirty seven does not override the um. Uh, the HOA covenants and rules and regulations. And what I'm also curious about is. On HB twelve thirty nine, uh, I would assume that there'd be a similar uh thing, although if if not, um, please let me know. But that uh HOAs in their designs, uh, they might still be allowed to just use whatever. Um, you know, aesthetic opinions they might have uh to make whatever decisions they're going to make if they're. Um, covenants allow them to do so. Is that correct?
So on, on your first point, um, that, that is, that is correct, and there was a really interesting piece in the Seattle Times about a month or so ago about that exact. Point, which is that um essentially if you already are in an HOA or otherwise have covenants legally binding covenants on your house. Um, that, that say. We don't do duplexes or we don't do ADUs, then those are going to be allowed to stand. And one of the points that. Um, some folks were making was, well, then, you know, that's not really spreading. Spreading the um. You know, spreading the housing around in an equitable way, and it's often the case that those folks who have the wherewithal to to, you know, enter into those agreements or have. You know, understand the legal, you know, and understand how to sort of get legally binding documents protecting their property. Um, you know, those are already the people who who are, don't have to worry about, you know. Uh, this, you know, affordable housing or finding more housing and whether that's fair or not, and. You know, I, I think it's both not fair and, you know, it is. It, they're legally binding and you can't kind of go backwards in that way. So it's a real interesting. Issue and, but is, you know, a, a good point as well that that future agreements are going to have to abide by this. Um, in terms of your second question, um, that's a, that's a great question. I would imagine that. An HOA, um. You know, I'm not going to answer because I'm not a hundred percent sure. I will get back to that, but that's, that's a great question as to, as to how this affects an HOA's design standards.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I have a comment on uh twelve ninety three. It seems like the problem they're trying to solve is clarity and timing. Is that accurate?
Yes, and I think the, I think the, the bigger picture is, I think, less what goes on in a city like Snoqualmie. And and more, you know, in a city like Seattle where. Um, you know, designer review boards have a lot of power and and they have um a, a, whether, whether they're doing this intentionally or not. Um, they can really slow down the pace of development by, you know, by requiring lots of revisions and. You know, again, really getting down into the small details that they probably shouldn't be. Um, but overall, I would say yes, that, that is the, that is the goal.
Okay, I I just would like to highlight from my perspective. With uh actually yourself and uh Councilmember Johnson and the current planning commission, I think we have dodged. Some really um questionable design choices if we would not have reviewed. Um, and slowed down some things. I think of signage. Um, and what was proposed is like brush metal where we went to uh antique and color design. I mean, so I think. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, anyway, I'm hoping it doesn't get to be a rubber stamp because I think we have helped. Preserve uh Snoqualmie with some of the decisions I've seen just in the last couple of years. As a comment.
I, it's a great comment. I think the idea here would be. To try to have those discussions upfront and have those types of, you know, um. Criteria sort of established in advance. Um, but you are correct, you know, it's, it's hard to write regulations or or standards that are gonna be. You know, a great fit for every potential situation. Um, and and it is, it is definitely, you know, a valuable tool that we have to be able to. Um, make some relatively subjective decisions. Um, sort of to the best of, to the best of our ability to kind of match up what we're seeing in front of us from the applicant and what our standards are. Um, so definitely a gray area there, but um Chair Maruziak, that's a, that's a really good, really good point.
All right. Any, any other questions, uh Commissioner Smith?
No, I don't think so at this time. This is really interesting updates. I, I was. I wasn't familiar with the latter two, thirteen uh thirty seven and twelve ninety three, so that was. That was interesting information.
Commissioner Elif?
Nothing at this time. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Crone?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Okay, anything else? Uh, Senior Planner Goodman?
That's it for me. Thank you all very much.
Okay, and understand, correct me if I'm wrong, that we will, as uh other. Issues of the legislative session uh come up, that uh there may be further updates. Is, is that accurate?
Sure, if that's, if you're interested in that, I'd be happy to do that again, do this again in the future.
You know, I think it's extremely useful to see things uh before they, they actually hit us, so I appreciate that.
Totally.
Okay, and then items of planning commissioner interest. I'm gonna actually queue this up. One thing that I'd like to. Uh, remind everybody, we have a city government email. And a number of years ago, it was highlighted. That there's a lot of good legal advantages to having a city government email. If uh there's some inquiries that are made. That uh ask for your official correspondence and you put it in your private email, you could inadvertently drag your private email into uh into the. Spotlight. You may not want to do that. But regardless of how this is, please check your government email at least twice per week. There's important stuff that comes out, important meetings, polls, for example, are we gonna meet July third and whatnot? And I know that in the past, sometimes I've been guilty of, I'll check it once every ten days, but I'm just encouraging everybody, let's make it a twice a week. Uh, minimum of twice a week, check your city email because there are important things come out on that.
The, that, that's.
Pardon me?
That's a great point, and I, I just wanted to raise, I, that reminds me of something that I've struggled with in the past is. Um, I have tried to add the city email account. To my, you know, my phone, for example, um, and running to the issue where it won't let me because of a permissions issue because I already have. An existing work outlook exchange account on my phone that it would require me to get rid of my. It, it seems like I can't have both my work and the city email account at the same time. So I defaulted to not doing that, obviously, and just having to log in, remember to log into the website uh or office dot com. I don't know if there's any way to work around that, but it's a, I, I understand it from a security concern, but it's, it's, it's a big headache.
Yeah, actually, there might be an advantage in not having it on your phone because I've always done it. Um, via, um, you know, the outlook via the internet, just for the standpoint of. Again, it's isolated. You start downloading emails on your phone, then your phone might be open to. Uh, in a, in a legal inquiry going there, so I, I think that's intentional.
I'm on my work laptop right now, so I'm, I'm exposed either way.
All right. Um, okay, now let me. Um, actually, I have one other item of interest, I'll finish me and then move on, actually two more, and uh then I'll, I'll do the poll. Uh, I'm curious from. Um, either our, our. Staff or consultants. The King County population, if you took a snapshot, the end of Q one, so March of twenty twenty. And you took a snapshot of that, and then you took a snapshot of March of twenty twenty three. Did it go up or down? And um, I, I just want to put that out there because uh there seems to be. You know, this assumption of population growth and there are a number of areas in the West where that's just not happening. I'm very curious. How King County, which includes Seattle, fares in that comparison, uh, basically pre and post pandemic. And then uh a third item is actually for uh Commissioner Smith. I'm a, I'm a big fan of making. Decisions conscious, not by default. So um a couple of meetings ago. We pointed out that the community character element of the comprehensive plan was gonna be. Uh, basically broken up and interleaved into the um, into the new comprehensive plan. And we couldn't find any reason why that wasn't a good idea, and you were one of the folks that was around when that was separated, and it was separating into. A very separate section that apparently is unusual for cities. So I just wondered if you had any comments on that before we, you know, just let that. Getting relieved into the, into the other sections.
Yeah, I, I, I went back and and was like, trying to look through old files. I, I, I still have, you know, binders of, of hand mail meeting packets from. Whatever that was ten years or so ago. Um, I, I couldn't find any rationale or justification for. Why that had happened and, and I don't recall it being any sort of a remarkable conversation point either.
Okay, all right. At that point, we'll. We'll proceed. Okay.
Oh, thanks for asking.
So this is a Commissioner Smith, that you've got the floor. Any other items of planning commissioner interest?
You, you know, the only other item. It's probably less of planning commission interest, but obviously just the, the. Traffic concerns this week, I think, are causing a lot of headaches for, for residents. It's certainly making it difficult to, you know. Right now with school being in session, it's hard to get around, but that'll be less of a problem in a few days, but even just, you know, it makes me wonder about like getting emergency services vehicles around and whatnot. It's been. You, you know, I. I, I think it was yesterday, yesterday I drove down to uh Kent at four-ish PM, and it, it took me. From Jacobia to getting underneath the I ninety interchange was about a forty-five minute commute. Um. And and obviously that's gonna be, that's gonna be an issue for. A long time. It's been exacerbated by um, by the I ninety repaving, but. Um, you know, it, my, my bigger concern, obviously the traffic, the traffic, that's not gonna go away, but. I, I fear there is a public safety element to seeing some of the maniacal things that people do to try and. Cut the line, if you will, uh, making very unsafe U-turns, things like that. It is a. It, it's, it's like a video game road rage out there. Um, at least that was my experience yesterday on, on a holiday, no less. Um. At around between four and five PM. I don't know that there's necessarily any comment on that, but it does, I'm hoping it's something that. To the ability they can, like uh SPD is keeping an eye on it because. I could just see tempers rising among other commuters um or other travelers at that time. It's a tinderbox.
I think, yeah, I think. I think very valid. In fact. I think there, there were a lot of reports, there was an incident on eighteen ninety recently. So, yeah, no, you're, you're right. You're right. Valid comment. Um, anything else, Commissioner Smith?
That's it for right now.
Okay, Commissioner Elif?
That's gonna bring up the same comment that Commissioner Smith did. Um, I think we were probably a few cars apart from each other yesterday.
Hope I didn't, uh, hope I didn't wave to you.
Uh, no, no other comments. Thank you so much.
All right. Commissioner Crone?
No comments. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, at this point, we move on to uh upcoming schedule, future agenda list. Uh, Community Development Director Arteche?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Emily Artetche, Community Development Director, City of Snoqualmie. Each month or each time we meet as a planning commission, you'll see this included in your packet material. It's the future agenda list. It gives you an idea of what to expect at upcoming meetings. It's a snapshot in time. So each time we, we meet with a chair and we, we become aware that there's an opportunity to move an item forward, we add it to this list. As you can see right now, we've got something scheduled tentatively for the first meeting in September on the climate change, environment slash climate change element as we continue to move forward with the land use element. We also have an opportunity to do some additional training on historic preservation. You heard today that you also serve as the historic design review board. And since I've been employed, we haven't talked much about what those duties and responsibilities mean, but you do have a dual role and there has been and will be future projects for you to review and consider and design review. And you have the expectation to become knowledgeable and proficient in that area. And I believe that there, there's an opportunity coming up for training on that. So stay tuned for, for more information on that. But we have it tentatively scheduled in the month of July. And then also in August, you'll, or July, you'll see that accessory dwelling units will come back. A opportunity for the public hearing, followed by your recommendation to the city council.
Good. And actually, since you've got that up, we were sharing a July 3rd meeting. What is the poll list on that?
Well, at this point, it, it's my recommendation that we go ahead and cancel that meeting. I know there's been some discussion back and forth about having a meeting, a meaningful meeting and moving forward with land use. But we are sandwiched in between just a regular workday and a holiday. And for that reason, or weekend and a holiday, for that reason, I'm, I'm recommending that we cancel that meeting and just reconvene at the second meeting in July.
Okay, I'll make a formal motion that we cancel the July 3rd meeting and pick it up on July 17th. On favor?
Aye.
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 Done?
Wonderful.
Okay. Is that everything?
We do have the work program. You'll also, Commissioners, you'll also just, oh, become familiar with the work program. It's a nice reminder of what we're here doing. Some of these items can shift and change as time goes on and, and we allocate our time differently. But here's what was agreed upon and added to the work program for 2023. And we may need to, to take a look at these, maybe not tonight, but we could come back with some proposed revisions. For example, we know the mill site design standards are not likely to be submitted this year. I would like to reach out to the mill site and just double check that. The multifamily tax exemption, we need to bring that forward to the city council through the CD committee to discuss the proposed revisions to the Snoqualmie municipal code and the ordinance associated with it. And then there's a resolution which designates the mill site as a tax exemption, but there may be opportunities to designate other areas that would certainly help in the city's demonstration of meeting and opening up opportunities and breaking down barriers to additional affordable housing. And then there's up opportunities as time allows to consider the wireless code and updates from the federal FCC and sign code. Any questions?
I'm just curious, why is the no design standards being delayed? Is there any reason for that or just?
The, the economy is bad. The, the economy is a challenging time right now, and the consultants that would normally do that kind of work are completely booked up with their comprehensive plan work. So there's a shortage right now of available labor as well as just a, a bad economy.
Okay, the demand must be, for that development must be less than in years past. Okay. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Do you have a couple of updates I could mention?
Please.
So I would like to mention the fact that the city of Snoqualmie is not alone in doing its comprehensive plan update. Right now, King County also has a King County comprehensive plan update as well as a, just to get the terminology right, the Snoqualmie Valley sub-area plan is also available in a draft format for comment. So two documents are out there that deal with, you know, King County, one more focused in on the Snoqualmie Valley. I just encourage you to take a look at those two documents and add your comments. They are, they are wanting feedback. They're looking for participation and there's no better people in I, I can think of in our community than our planning commissioners that are working on this nonstop on, you know, day, day in, day out, you know, as representing the cities of Snoqualmie. So if you have an opportunity to review it and look at it, you can make your feedback to the county.
Okay. Good. Is that in the city website? Links to that?
We can provide you the links to it. I know it's.
Be good. Yeah, I would like to take a look at it. It's probably a thousand pages, but at least like to look at the index.
Yeah, that's it.
All right. Thank you. At this point, I move, we adjourned the June 20th meeting. Can I get a second? Second, on favor?
Aye.
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 He is adjourned.
Thank you all.
Excuse me. Thank you.